Next up, so I guess we'll roll right in. So the big event tonight is, you know, for the first time, San Mateo now has district-wide elections. So we've got basically candidates that have to live in your area, your district. Naturally, we're voting for our district, District Three. We basically incorporate Lori Meadows, the Village, Bay Meadows, Fiesta Gardens, Sunny Bray. It's kind of our little strip that's District Three. So we have all three candidates that are running for District Three tonight. And then what I've done is I've asked them to kind of each of them, I'll give them each five minutes and give us an intro about themselves, kind of where they're at, who they are. And then what I'm going to do is open it up to questions to both folks online and here in person. I don't believe in like writing the pre-planned questions. Let's get real, like let's ask the questions. Let's do it in person. We're going to have them here and now's your chance to see who's going to represent us because there's a lot of changes going on with San Mateo. Housing is a big issue, everyone knows that. Also, there's a way to incorporate the housing and do it in a way that doesn't ruin our neighborhood. So it's really doing a fine balance and that's my quick two cents. With that, I'm going to open it up. I'll bring up, we'll just start, I guess we'll start with Rob. Rob Newsome, you want to come up first? I'll start with Rob and I'll go with Sarah and then Sergio. And then after that, I'm going to give you each, around the five minute mark, I'll kind of give you each a little wave. And then you can wrap it up and then we'll take questions after that. Everyone's good? All right. Well, Rob Newsome.
This is a little bit weird format because I feel like I need to talk over here. I'm also suffering from a weird like seasonal cough thing. So if I feel a little, if I sound a little clumsy, I'm sorry about that. I am trying to alleviate that with the cough drop. Anyhow, hello and thank you to the San Mateo Glenville Village Neighborhood Association and San Mateo Police Department for hosting us today. My name is Rob Newsome. I am a 24-year District Three resident. As you heard, District Three runs right through the heart of San Mateo, right through the middle. I was born in San Francisco. I'm a fifth-generation peninsula native. My family moved to San Mateo when I was in grammar school and I've grown up here. My wife Jennifer is from San Francisco. She was born to immigrant parents in the city. We married 16 years ago and we chose to continue to stay in San Mateo and really make it our family's hometown. We still feel like this is the greatest place to raise our teenage daughters and of course, our little dog Mini. The climate here is great, the streets are safe, thank you chief. We have diverse family and friends who live here in the area rich in culture, history and technology. For those of you who know schools, I went to St. Matthew's Catholic School. I know a lot of people in the village or St. Craig's, sorry about that. Also went to Burrell Middle School and St. Nation's College Prep in San Francisco. And I'm an Eagle Scout from San Mateo, very own Route 42. I attended Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, have a degree in graphic communications and print management. Most of my career has been in the printing and manufacturing and transportation and transit industries. Completed the city services academy back in 2019. And since then, I've served as a commissioner for the city of San Mateo on the city personnel board. I've also for the past year and a half been the vice chair for that board. I worked just prior to the pandemic, about a year and a half before the pandemic, to restart our Sunny Bray Neighborhood Association. And you know, your village has incredible neighborhood association. Unfortunately, Sunny Braves had kind of lapsed. But very proud of the fact that I've helped restart our neighborhood association. I currently serve as their vice president. We've done a lot, even through the pandemic, to keep our neighbors informed of what's happening in the city. We really strive to build close community, just like you guys have in the village. We're trying to get to where you are, where we have two or three neighborhood events every year. It's getting easier now that we're lifting the pandemic restrictions. Very excited for the opportunity to run, I feel like I should put it here for me. Run for District Three City Council. I have a lot invested in our neighborhoods. I'm endorsed by the majority of the leadership from our district neighborhood and homeowner associations, including, thank you Dennis. As your city council member, I'll represent everyone, particularly our District Three neighborhoods, which are Central, Sunny Bray, 19th Avenue Park, Fiesta Gardens, the Trench Triangle, Bay Meadows, San Mateo Glenville Village and Lori Meadows. My grassroots campaign has spent the last few months hosting coffees in each neighborhood. One of the best terraces we had was your neighborhood and I recognize a lot of you coming out for that, so thank you. For me, much more important than telling you what my, you know, what my agenda is, has really been hearing what your concerns and likes are for the city and seeing how I can help address these challenges. On the city council, I plan to focus on four primary priorities. The first is continuing to have and maintain funding for public safety, particularly our police and fire department. Want to make sure that we continue to bolster street safety. We've had, we had a near miss of a child in, sorry, in Bay Meadows, thank you, a month and a half or so ago. But that's not, that story was just one that happened and been caught on probably a Tesla's video camera. We have things like that happen on the regular and we have a lot of intersections that we need to try to work for to keep our kids safe. Second priority is really helping build affordable housing that fits our city needs while maintaining the history, legacy and structures of the neighborhoods and trying to find that balance so that it's not impacting a neighborhood with a new development. And then maintaining and improving city infrastructure and supporting small and medium-sized businesses. I think that District Three needs someone who's going to listen to them and I hope to, you know, basically be that person for all of you. I'm really proud of my endorsements. One of them is my second cousin, he is the governor of California. That said, I don't have a lot of state-level endorsements. I do have a lot of local endorsements. People like retired state senator Jerry Hill, county supervisor Carol Groom, who herself is a District Three resident. She lives in Lori Meadows, south of you guys. Also, county supervisor David Canepa, councilman Eric Rodriguez, former mayor Maureen Frischette, and longtime, she's a longtime and soon returning Sunny Bray neighborhood resident. Former mayor and neighborhood leader Claire Mack, retired police chief Susan Manheimer, retired fire chief, and several others, all with close ties, both to our city and our district. I'm doing time. Okay. I am from the neighborhood. I know intimately, neighborhood by neighborhood, what our challenges are. And I really think that I can help solve a lot of these things. I can be that voice for you all in the city council. Through my 30 years in business, I've worked with people of different ages, backgrounds. I've really tried to hone the skill of listening to people and build consensus. And I think that with an almost entirely new city council after November eighth, my leadership experience can really be what our rookie council will need. In closing, looking forward to taking your questions today. If you have any questions about what my stance is on any issues, please check out my website, which is robnewsom, or sorry, robssamateo.com or robertnewsomjr.com. Thank you all for your time and consideration and look forward to taking your questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Rob. Okay, next up, Sarah Fields.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. On the screen, I think you can see me a little bit, so I'll wave for the audience. And good evening to all of you here. My name is Sarah Fields. I am a 19th Avenue Park resident. I am a renter and I have served San Mateo for years as a volunteer, an interfaith leader and the commissioner on the Parks and Recreation Commission. We're really in a fortunate position here in San Mateo. Now that we have district-wide elections, we will see that our council members can come from all over San Mateo instead of just one from a corner of San Mateo. And that's really a gift. And I hope that you all take advantage of it. So I'm passionate about building consensus and inviting diverse perspectives into solutions-oriented policymaking. I'm a trained city planner and I worked in state and local government. And I believe that experience along with working with all of you, with the different neighborhood groups, with different advocacy groups, will help bring San Mateo into the future. I'm running to really focus on three top priorities for the city. The first is to develop a welcoming San Mateo. One that continues to be a wonderful place to live, work and recreate. I'll bring a thoughtful and informed approach to development as a trained planner, evaluating every project for consideration of community impacts, design, environment and law. Next is fixing and updating our infrastructure. Be engaging infrastructure across the San Mateo, so, yes?
Continue, raise the voice level a little. You have trouble hearing back here.
Sure. Okay, we need to fix and update our infrastructure. All of you know, having lived in the village, some of your streets got busted. They give you some love. You've got great roundabouts, you've got pretty good sidewalks, but a lot of your streets need to be resurfaced and that's true across the city of San Mateo. Can you hear me in the back? A little better? Excellent. All right. Okay, next is reinvesting in our parks. In the Parks and Recreation Commission, I want to look at and really reevaluate our park master plan. We're going to see a major project in Central Park in the next year. And that's going to make us think about all the other parks. We have great recreation centers. They were built out about 50 plus years ago. They need reinvestment too. These are wonderful community assets that we have in San Mateo. We're very lucky to be starting from a good place, but we need to work to build them into the future. I want to say that I'm really fortunate to have the support of many state leaders and the assembly member Kevin Mullen and state senator Josh Becker, as well as mayors and council members across the region, including from our neighboring city, Belmont, Foster City and Berlining, as well as the majority support of the state council. I'm also really proud of the involvement of the Journal and parents of Aggie, it's Mar Monte, the San Mateo Public Democratic Party and the San Mateo Public and Recreational Council. I want to say a note about something. You should have all received your ballots in the mail by now. If for whatever reason, not received your ballot in the mail, you can go to the elections office. They can be found at smcacre dot org slash elections. If you haven't received your ballot and you really sure have, so there could be something amiss. And I really, it is so important to me that every single one of you vote, ideally you vote for me, but I really want every single one of you to vote. You can learn more about me, Sarah Fields, at sarahfor, that's F-O-R, sarahforSanMateo.com. I also just want to say a couple of things about the village. First of all, as I've campaigned this area, I've known this is a really significant age neighborhood. Everyone's committed to voting and that's great, you should all be very proud of yourself. The other thing I want to say about the village is you're taking spooky season very seriously. And I'm serious, really, like the Halloween decorations in the village are amazing. I'm incredibly proud of that community spirit that that whole community is. It's really very special. And I'm not going to say it's the best of District Three, but it's mine. I don't want to show favors to the city, not my neighborhood, not yet, but it's really an important thing. So I just, I want to end by saying that community service is something that was instilled in me from my family. My grandfather was a civil engineer for Caltrans. My grandmother on my other side is a public school teacher who taught math, first in Fresno and then in Los Angeles for many years. And my parents really instilled volunteerism in me. And that's why I decided to run the city council. I saw an open seat and an opportunity and I didn't care about San Mateo. I chose to make it my home. I grew up in San Diego. I lived in New York for a while, that's where I went to school. And I landed here because of work and it's such a great place to live and to work and to live your life. And so I just, I want to say that that's really what brought me here. That bringing people together, young people, seniors and everyone in between is what I'm passionate about and it's what I hope to do with all of you as you see how that works. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, next up, Sergio Sigmont. Hopefully I'm saying that right. Yeah, yeah, okay, got it. Here we go, Sergio. All right, let me see if I can tell it from there, but also by the way here.
All right, hi, Ron, I'm Sergio Sigmont. I'm running for District Three City Council. I'm running because I think we can make San Mateo a better place for everyone. I'm originally from New York, you know, I grew up in New York. I moved here a couple of years ago. While I was in New York, I started and ran a couple of businesses and worked in the local federal governments. A lot of volunteer work nonprofits. And through that experience, I learned that you really have to consider a lot of input when you're making plans for a wide audience. I moved to San Mateo mid-pandemic, so unfortunately did not experience a lot of the city services as others have. But I think that we can really work on making San Mateo more equitable for everyone. My main priorities are transit. You know, when we think of transit, a lot of people think about the trains. I'm also considering first and last mile transit, the fancy word, right? Basically, streets and sidewalks, right? We can't expect people to take transit or, you know, use it every single day if the sidewalks are falling apart or if the streets are not peached properly, as others have mentioned. And then the city has great projects undertaken for last mile transit, there's last mile transit. But I think we can always do a comment, make it more equitable for people who are, you know, disabled or have a stroller or disability situation. Transit also, you know, part of that is increasing service. I've always heard a lot of talking about increasing service, adding more lines and routes. Working with our regional and state partners to improve transit service. There's a lot of great stuff happening, especially around the area of fairs, you know, fair management. But I think we already have some work to do. When I say transit, a lot of people think of older people and younger people, but in reality, everyone should be in transit, right? It's a really great way to get around town, it's very affordable. Not to mention, you know, there's less traffic and it's better for the environment. Another one of my priorities is housing, right? We need housing and we need it now. We have a mandate within the next seven years, we have to add about 7,800 units. That's going to be a huge challenge. We need to add housing to not only transit corridors, right, you know, ECR, all the little big streets, but we also need to add housing to our areas, our local neighborhoods. I'm not proponent, I'm not a proponent for adding, you know, seven or eight-story apartments in everyone's neighborhood, but I think we can definitely invest more in duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. These are some great housing options that definitely add, the numbers are, you know, it's going to add up. Those are the things we have to do. One of my priorities is transparency and listening to the community, the voters. One of the big concerns that came up lately is that electrification effort within everyone's home. I think we'll, I'm sure some asked a question about it, but in case there isn't, you know, I support electrification for new buildings. For everyone's existing home, it's going to be very, it's going to be a tough act because of the cost, because of the infrastructure requirements, because of all those challenges that are putting people on the road facing. So when you vote and as Sarah mentioned, everyone should have gotten their ballot behind, looked it up to the county. I really ask that, you know, you look into every single candidate, you look into their background, you look into their professional experience, their personal experience. You know, what communities are related to all that stuff. I don't have any special endorsement, I'm not endorsed by the labor council or endorsed by, you know, some state politicians or anything like that. I don't have any special donations, right? All my donations data is online, there are no donations from special interest. My special interests are your interests. I am fully committed to being a candidate for the people within my district and for the wider San Mateo city. And I plan on continuing that transparency, right? Anyone in this room or anyone anywhere else can call me anytime. My phone number is, I'll send you my cell phone. My email, I don't have a campaign, I have that virtual email, it's all me. I got my, those are directly to my phone as well. And all my personal donations, tax dollars, full taxes involved, we take those out though. And, you know, it's, I'm really committed to transparency and I'll continue that transparency as I should account for my work. So tonight, I hope we get a lot of good questions. I hope, look forward to answering them and I look forward to, you know, getting a member vote. Thank you.
Sergio. Thanks, Sergio. All right, at this point, we'll open it up to questions to the candidates. Does anybody have, anybody want to start off with a question? Got to have a question.
Election people, come on.
Yeah, why don't all the three candidates come up here and then that way we can all address the questions.
I'm thirty-six. There you go. Where are your goals there?
All right, we'll start with you first.
I live close to the Passanova Park.
Uh huh, yes.
And so I'm really worried about parking. If you come on board with us, you're going to stress out parking. You shouldn't need a lot of parking for your parks. So how's that going to go? I know, you know, I've been here 70 years. So I know all about parking underneath at Central, but I'm really, you know, the parking around Passanova and on the other side is not very good. So on all the games that people play, which I love, if people are parking you guys, very.
Yeah, I wonder, yeah, sure.
Real quick, I'm going to, I guess, real quick for the bump in Hong, a question, is there going to be more parking around the park? Is that essentially what we're looking for, more parks? Yes.
So, okay, a couple of things about parks. First of all, I wanted to prioritize every San Mateo having a park with a short walk of the neighborhood. Right now, we have an acreage ratio and I think that's pretty good. A thousand people per acre. And that works, but some of these, there's kind of a challenge and a lot of that is covered by Central Park. Because of the pitchings for apps, so I need, I would like to see us really have, in the parks that have higher levels of recreation activities, community soccer, youth sports, everything, to figure out a more specific parking plan. And we've seen it with a lot of the parks, you know, if you look at, the District Three, 28th Avenue to Bay Meadows, you have a lot of parking challenges because of this. There was not trying to get parking shared with the event center. I think that's a good solution. So would you need to really change how the parks are used? Fiesta Meadows has a small parking lot that doesn't quite accommodate all of it. And for Passanova, I think we need to see either underground parking or some kind of accommodation.
I love that underground, thank you.
So it would be expensive. I just, I want to be clear, like.
Well, if you're going to train, they get underground, right?
Yeah, and so I think that's something that, like, granted, I want to take a little of the park master plan, the underneath look for decent, that would be part of it. The reality is, I need to mean that's not a park, which means it appropriate equipment, accommodating the parking, and that what that could lead to in parks, we really need to put up a bond to accommodate. And that could.
Well, probably it's great for all the kids in the village, right? Mom and dad go to their soccer games and all this.
Yeah.
But it's the owners come from different parks.
Sure.
Which is just parking where they want because I'm going to home my kids, right? And it's okay, you just stop with the people and you're not parking right the next week. You know, and it's only a certain amount of time.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like every day.
But I agree with the thing that I see there always a workaround with some people parking. It could be provided, it could be maybe there may be a need for accommodating the space.
Yeah.
You know, I'm really interested, you, everyone who lives in the village is an expert in the village. And I know that means that you come as an expert, but, you know, I really need to have an education that's a high-ability issue such as parking at a significant part of the park. I really want to hear from a collection of neighbors and come to a consensus that those things, not everyone pays the money, but if I meet most people living out there, I'm going to call it a good.
Sergio, you want to jump in on the park?
Yeah, definitely, you know, my phone number is, that's one point, right? Adding more parks, you know, it depends whether it be, you know, smaller, what they call pocket parks, you know, those are the thing. You know, the idea is to make it so you can support higher density housing by having closer parks. Regarding the situation, and this is a tough situation, you know, we're definitely some choices, whether it be setting a parking enforcement, in a signage example, or turning the speed to park in the park lots, unfortunately, just to encourage people to park full. You know, so for getting people out of their cars and on the transit is a great place to start. You know, whether that be, if there's a weight gain and the hogs are coming in the carpool or whatever, every solution, but again, we need to go the more capacitive approach and talk to all of the people that's going on. But your situation, it's definitely, you know, I would, I don't think it was a parking, it's not going to be in the crosswalk.
As I said, it's a special place because I enjoy this place.
Rob.
But you know, in 1959, I moved down at nine years old, right? And I lived in a house that I was raised in. Lorridale was a huge deal, Delmar, I remember you said. Who said that? I don't know.
Yeah.
It's just something different, right?
Oh, wow.
It's not a competition, but.
We've seen a lot of things and you guys said Delmar and San Mateo had their chance. They knew they put a thousand, fifteen hundred houses over there and they didn't do anything about it. And now we have to suffer with it. So that's what I've seen. So I used to see cows and bulls and the guy that owned the whole, all that whole royalty, he'd ride his horse out there and whip up and all that. And so I tend to say, because they came from San Francisco. So they had a chance to do it, they never do it. So that's why I bought a parking at the parks. When you construct a new park, I would like to have parking for my grandchildren and my son.
I would that for your grandchildren and my kids.
Yeah. Well, just forcing the fact it couldn't happen, right?
Yeah, Rob's going to comment on the parking for the, parking, parking, here we go.
Well, I apologize for one thing, that is, my kids are probably playing on your field. So, but I live in Sunny Bray and we are very underparked in Sunny Bray. We have what I would call a pocket park. And so both their points, we need more parks. We also need to make sure that, you know, we have policies in place to enforce parking and that those are heightened, not just Monday through Friday, but during games. And then, you know, we need to make sure that as we have new developments. So like in Sunny Bray, we've got Station Parker E and Azariah, which are brand new projects there. And we're building projects, new residences that don't even have one parking, full parking space per house. And I think that that is a mistake. I think, you know, the trend obviously is we're trying to build on the transit corridor and get people out of their cars, which is the right thing to do. But that said, we also live in the suburbs, not Manhattan. And so really, if you have a bedroom, you should have a car. And that's probably the ratio that we should go. The other thing I've been doing the last couple of months, and I saw a lot of you, is I've been going to different parks every weekend and doing meet and greets and coffee with all of you. And one thing I learned, which I didn't know, is the Concar Park, which is the little tiny park across from Redding, that was actually built by, when they redeveloped the Dumpy Hotel, they used the funds for the redevelopment, the city used it to build parks. And so the point of this is, as we have new developments being built, we need to make sure that the developers and the projects are putting and funding in, so we can go and fund it with bond measures and extra taxes, but really, we should also make sure that when these developers are making multimillion-dollar complexes, that they're tossing down money to help us park out of it.
Thank you. Thank you all. Questions? Yes, sir, right over here.
I'd like to know where you stand on measure Y and as the council is trying to overturn. You guys are supposed to be the consent of the government to put it, to pass measure Y. It's not up to the city council to overturn, because people know. They went for housing and see, which is the most development, they're going to have 55,000 people by 2039. When we, we're not even mandated to do that, the state turned that down. So why don't we go back and do that? I mean, if this, if we have 55,000 people in the city, it would be total gridlock. There's no plans, they went away from the transit. But hey, they went to see, they're just stacking pack everywhere. So some of the council right now is involved in the developments that aren't paid for. So I want to know where you stand on that. And also, special interest from outside the city, they go to our council meetings and they debate song and dance. They should have no say in our city. They come down from San Francisco and say, we need to do this, we need to do that. They don't leave here, work here, they're just special industry. And one, the last thing is about your reach code or what I call overreach code. If, what's the deal about having a gas line above to provide a can of coke? I mean, what's the difference?
So I guess we'll start with, I guess, where they're at with, where does each candidate fall in regards to measure Y? We'll start there and see what each one says. Rob, you want to start this one first or you want to go the other way?
I support measure Y. It was controversial, you know, because we need to grow housing. So I'm not naive in the fact that I recognize that we need to grow housing. We need to grow housing as fast as we're pushing it, maybe not. But we do need to grow housing. We just need to make sure that we're doing it responsibly. And I think the real point of measure Y was to push back on the city council. So they recognized that the people were weighing in here and the people want to make sure that we're keeping you guys included in the process. So I did support measure Y. And I really do want to be the person that hears from all of you and supports the will of what you want. That said, we're going to get pressure from the state. We're growing, the population is growing, so we have.
The population is out, it's going to go down. It's not ongoing anymore.
They use it, but we're still in a flood. I mean, we're here behind.
But people are leaving state and it's going to get worse.
True, maybe, maybe. I mean, I can't, I can't say that yet, but.
Yeah, the last three years, it's a burden for the immigration, for the new people, and that will have to ride out of there.
Well, we'll continue on with measure Y and then we'll hit your next one, but you have three good points that we want to cover all.
Yes, for measure Y, wasn't that, wasn't that a lie, a lie? I was supporting a back of the ballot. I was supporting it back in the ballot, but, but again, uh, measure Y was decided like, four years ago. So I think that if you, if you reevaluate, um, you know, if you put a general plan on the ballot, then, you know, then the voters have a choice, like, we want to remove the limitations on housing. Um, I think it's fair, but, uh, we can, you know, the government does change over time, to put it that. Um, you know, again, so I think this is only measure Y, yeah. So, yeah, we need more housing now, um, you know, public service affordability, like, why is rent forty thousand dollars? Especially, you know, all these questions to be answered, huh? So, um, we put it back in the ballot, but if people rechoose, if they don't want it, then fuck, we won't have, we'll, we'll keep measure Y. But I think the voters have a right to be.
Sarah.
Okay, um, I worked on a campaign, uh, for no measure Y, um, so to clear where I stand. I, I, I think it was really clear what happened in the last election, which is that voters would be divided to the, that was just passed by a margin of forty-two votes. There were over fifty thousand votes cast, it passed by over forty-two votes. Um, I don't know what Sergio was talking about, maybe because he's a fairly new Daniel Tan. Um, but, uh, actually, the history of measure Y is measure H as measure P, um, and it dates back all the way to nineteen ninety-one. Um, and progressively, that measure Y was the third iteration of a vote, um, that, that limited heights to fifty-five feet and density to fifty minutes per acre to the block. And limit on both height and density in development. Um, at each vote that, that was being taken of that height and density limit, um, the, the, the potential ridership passed diminished. So we had very strong hearing support, mild hearing support, to almost a pie. I respect that it, it didn't in fact pass. That being said, there are some state provisions that eclipse local measures. And I think that they need to be used very, very carefully. An example of where I think this has been used and it's been done well is the Kiko Crossing project in downtown San Mateo. It's a hundred percent affordable housing, it's seven stories tall. It's being built by a local nonprofit housing developer called Mid Penn Housing. I think it's a great project. I think, though, that we need to be very careful with how these kinds of things are used. I also supported measure R, which was a ballot measure that, that also failed, I'm sad to say. But it was a ballot measure that would have kept the protection of measure H and measure P historically, uh, across the different single family home neighborhoods. I think, really, that's my philosophy when it comes to housing development. I don't want to touch a single family neighborhood up. There's no reason to do, it's part of what makes the village very, of their wants to live, and many of the other neighborhoods across. Where we need to focus and concentrate our efforts, and where we need the housing requirements during the regional housing needs assessment, through our housing element, is along the transit corridor, and that happens to the use of building housing by the state to be able to build in so many commercial development areas. That's what we can be able to build, and we are right, sir, that the state of California that decreased the area population, but the Bay Area and San Mateo, California, haven't. We're still an incredibly desirable place to live. We have many, many, many great jobs, maybe too many great jobs. That's part of the reason why housing is so expensive. Um, and we need to figure out how to balance that out. Because it's such a great place to live, you know, the weather, the neighbors, it's a nice place to live, it's a friendly, people wait to, I hope you, I mean, who your neighbors and neighbors. Really, it's a great place to live, I understand why so many people treat it as their home. And so we really need to get this right. So, you know, we have so many incredible, beautiful, communist areas, and, and, and we're happy about that. We need to make sure that we know the housing, so that our teachers, our firefighters, our police officers, um, you know, small business owners, all different housing people are able to be in here and we thrive there.
Let's go to your next, uh, the next topic you had, in regards to develop, to the developer.
It came about because of the Bayou Bill, you know? It was just letting them go wherever they want, or go to some monster city like that thing again. It's six, they're empty, you know, it's a long, short in the city, and that's why we passed it originally. Otherwise, you know, school, like Vancouver, where there's also the family housing, and then like this train station, there's a twenty-story tower.
Well, that is, that is, that is.
Um, you can develop downtown like everywhere else, something happened, you know? If you go out, planes and single family house. So if you want.
Well, last time you were moving, though. And you've been to Ohio City, and you've built up.
Yeah, yeah, some, but I mean, get out, away, even say, it's, you go to the sunset, it's housed. So if you want to build, and please, do it downtown like every other city. They build most of the highlights downtown. Not in the neighborhoods, but my next point was about the overreach codes.
Okay.
Where you tell people that they can put a, a gas water heater in, but it'll just be fifty cents a kilowatt hour, uh, to buy, and then spend fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars for a heat recirculating water heater that's moving slow in the winter, that doesn't even work. I mean, what's gonna stop you from driving down the home people and putting in your own water? You know, I mean, it's, it's meddling in people's lives. The amount of water heaters, uh, few hours in San Mateo, aren't gonna make any difference. California is one temple, one of the sun of global warming. A hundred houses in San Mateo is like, is like a, put a cheap room in the Pacific Ocean. It isn't gonna make any difference. You couldn't make the coast, it's sold, there needs to get updated. But my dad's ninety-three, he barely uses a water heater, he's not gonna spend five thousand dollars to put in a new one. I mean, it is ridiculous.
Okay, so this is actually a great question, um, and let me watch the council meeting last night, a lot of it was discussed. Um, so, this gentleman here is talking about the reach code, and I'm, I'm doing things right up to try to find what is, is part of the reach code. So, first of all, no one is being asked to remove appliances that currently work in your home. Okay, no, no one is being asked, you have a dryer, a stove, uh, a heater, an air conditioning unit, and it works and it functions, no one is asking you to tear it out. The request of the reach code is that by a particular date, it's the beginning of twenty twenty-five, when you apply for permits to update or remodel your home, the request is that when you do that, you will only get comments for electrifying products. Which is very different than saying we want you to tear out what you already have. I understand that this might feel upsetting to some people. See, the reality is there are forty thousand households across the city of San Mateo. We are knocking our final goal of, of current status, and this is one of many efforts trying to get us there. There are a whole code of programs for the influence and energy, and the Bay Area, okay? Bay Area, I forget what it stands for. So there's a variety of free aid programs as well, and now, people just announced today, this article in Daily Journal, I know many of you are Daily Journal readers, there's an article in Today's Journal, Daily Journal, that highlights a ten thousand dollar agency loan from the Pittsburgh Energy Organization that can help with these programs.
Let's go, let's see, then. Sergio, let's give everyone a chance, uh, Sergio, why don't you take it?
Yeah.
Next, and then we'll go to Rob.
Electrification is a good thing in the long run. Um, as I said earlier, I support it, um, for rebuilding, I support it when using major renovations for the fifty buildings. Um, I don't know if, you know, in twenty twenty-six, if the water heater dies, if it's pulled permit, again, which I didn't really do, like, do. That you have to replace the water, I don't think for that, that's a little bit challenging. Um, I will say, if you do switch a large water heater, a deep pump water heater, it's actually like, like, it's like a gas water heater. Um, but anyway, the, uh, you know, I won't support making everyone rip them out if they fail, right? In twenty twenty-six, your gas stuff, so, the range, you know, of the competition fails, you should not have to replace it unless you're off to replace it, a lot of the other stuff now, right? Uh, if we look at everyone's electric panel, if you know where it is, don't believe it. Um, a lot of the time, it's fifty amps, a hundred amps, right? We're gonna have to add breakers, which gives it the pull of another huge back cord from the street, and, and a lot of people is on the ground, right? Um, and that costs a lot of money. Uh, sure, we're heading to the dollars, it's a loan, paid back, not free. Um, and we are paying for the appliances, to be fair, and the government, and the only reason is we're paying for these appliances and belts, but labor is where it's at. So, you know, I got someone telling me you gotta five thousand dollar quote to actually, um, do the panel flop out, do the two hundred meter. That is a lot, and you mentioned your, your older father, you know, it's, it's top of the right now. So I think we need to do this a little more smartly. Um, I would support it if it was, you know, cost neutral to the taxpayers, to go on it. Um, another thing, small businesses, if the business owner are very proud of the small businesses, you know? Um, if you have, like, McDonald's, I, McDonald's is a small business, all the time, it's a brand idea. Um, how are you gonna put in, you know, or a birthday, or all these other, they do small businesses, but it's not, it's not changing. But they, they have a place you can do a ten thousand dollar water heater and all this stuff, like, flash it. Like, that's not a shout, like, free training. I think we need to do a more detailed engineering focused study. Um, you know, protect the taxpayers in terms of their wallets, and protect the, we just, uh, six weeks ago, um, PG&E just begged everyone to turn off their electricity and not part of the car, right? So we, we gotta, we gotta do something to protect the infrastructure, um, against, uh, one of the more financially that to protect it, and that's.
Rob?
Sure. Well, I mean, there's, there's several things here. Uh, first is, everybody, everybody's in agreement on one thing, I think, which is, in the big picture, we want to work toward reducing greenhouse gas emissions, because that's gonna make life better for our kids, right? So, in the big picture, that's what everybody wants. Now, how are we gonna get there? Maybe that's where we, we kind of differ, right? So, first thing is, is that all new buildings going electric, no problem with that. That said, when we look at, uh, when we look at housing, you know, if, if it really is twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, that when your water heater goes out, now you've gotta replace it with an electric? We're, we're talking about rebates that you're gonna get, which maybe it's six or eight thousand. I think the largest number I heard is ten thousand dollars. If, if you talk about my house, which is a three bedroom, two, one and a half bath house, to actually change all my appliances from gas to electric, I've got quotes. It's gonna cost me eighty, some eighty to ninety thousand dollars to do that. Uh, if I wanna just, uh, do the basics, which is to, you know, add a couple more circuits to my panel, maybe change one appliance, and be able to wire my house for my electric car, because you got one, and we're moving towards electric cars too. Uh, again, you're looking at at least eight ten thousand dollars. So, you know, the rebates are great, but they, they really aren't concerning, because they don't cover the true whole cost. And so, where, where I, where I think, we're, we're getting the point, what you say, overreaching is when we're saying, you know, in three years, you can't, you can't replace something with gas. I think that that's an overreach, and I think, I think you're right, I think we need to, we need to make sure that we're, we're finding ways to do it, but that it's sustainable for people. And then there's a whole other part, which we're not talking about, the grid cannot support. I mean, when it's a clean energy and saying, oh yeah, I can support it, but no one from PG&E is coming to these city council meetings saying, yeah, sure, we can have every house have two to three times power, because we know that's not the case. And we know that PG&E is not, is not reputable in this sense either. I mean, they, they, they say one thing, and they, they go do something else. And so, you know, we really need to make sure that we're, we're looking out for, and as a city council, we're, we're putting pressure on PG&E to increase the load and the capacity. You know, Sergio made a comment that the electric builds underground, actually, no, it's not. The majority of our city, with the exception of Bay Meadows, our only new real neighborhood, everybody's got our power up above our houses, and the lights behind my house are forty-five years old. And, you know, it's, it's, it's ridiculous, and, and PG&E's making record, I'm not on the page. PG&E's making record profits, but we're not making them reinvest in our grid and our infrastructure. And so, all of these things are important, we need to, as the council, hold PG&E accountable, make the infrastructure improvements, so that we can go the way. And believe me, like, appliances right now, nobody wants to cook like that, electric stove house, that's what you keep hearing, right? But the technology will be there in ten years, I, I know it will, it's just, it's not there yet.
That's all I'm thinking, I don't, I mean, that's all we, we use. Also, the houses all have mobbing through wire, and you can't just slap a two hundred amp handle on and expect, no, they're, 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 through your attic, it's, you're gonna catch your house on fire.
My house was built in nineteen fifty-four.
Yeah, all, all ours were, my dad was, I was spending money, I'll go by and get a water heater, and I'll put it in for him. I, I mean, it's ridiculous, that's overreach, I mean, if you want people to be protected, what are you gonna do? Then you don't do that kind of stuff where people can think, oh, I'm older, too, I have someone.
But what, you had one last point in regards to developers, I think you brought up.
Yeah, I've seen many city council meetings that they go, where Ohio, where such and such, where you buddies from San Francisco, or the, this coalition, and that coalition, and they take their time, and, and they go to the meetings. City council usually don't listen to them, whether you work or live in San Mateo. You don't really have a vested interest in determining my life and our life share. It's up to us to determine how we want to live ourselves.
So is your question? So what, you know, what's your, is your question, are they taking special interest, are they taking donations from special interests? Is that your question?
Yeah, the city council, I mean, oh, oh, this, this, San Francisco came down and said, oh, you're not doing your part, when they're, they're the ones that replace twenty-five years, you've done one apartment, you're in a parking lot, and they're telling us what to do here. So, I mean, they should, you know, it should be open to residents, and people have a best, and they just do, and then they even profit, and it's all.
Well, I know Sergio had mentioned, and I think you're talking about special interest groups and donations, and I think you're kind of going that direction with developers, and I, I have a question myself, and I know you mentioned you're not taking any, Sergio, you're not taking any money from developers. Where do all three of you stand on taking money from special interest developers in your campaign? Um, where do you stand on that, and what, and if you are taking money?
Well, I'm not taking any money from special interest or developers. Uh, I've actually signed the pledge online on Nextdoor, uh, so far, Sarah hasn't done it yet, but she, she might. But, uh, you know, I, I know that, you know, people like the Bohannon family are, aren't including in my own campaigns. I, I'm not gonna be taking money from developers. And, and the other thing that's changed, I think, is state law says now that if you do take, and it's yet to be determined if this will pan through, but if you do take campaign contributions, then you're gonna have to refuse yourself when the city council meeting comes up regarding that. So, for those reasons alone, I will not be taking any money from any special.
Sergio?
All right, yeah, so I encourage everyone, try to, try to make things for me. Uh, if you go on the city website, uh, click on the election, there's a button that says, uh, you can buy and pay. You click on it, it brings you up to a file, you type in all three of our names, and you'll see a form called four sixty, and that way, every single person will be receiving a dollar or more from it. And that will say, all my persons are donations. I go above the on, I put my full ten forty back to turn online as well. But campaign donations are fully available online, encourage all of you to read it. I have not received any donations, but no special interest, uh, in mine. I've also signed the Nextdoor petition, um, I have not received any letters of, uh, the whole family, in case it wasn't. I mean, but, uh, I have no special interest, but your interest, right? No donations, no grubbing, none of that.
Great, so I am part of my colleagues' support. I have received technical community support from elected officials, including state owner Josh Becker, um, three of the current council members, um, and I received some financial support from local laborers. Um, in light of S fourteen thirty-nine, which is what, um, the group someone was referring to, which is a new state law that, um, asks that if you receive two hundred fifty dollars or more in contributions from entities, you can choose yourself. Um, I've hardly seen the financial contribution from, uh, both end of development, um, which are chosen to give back. Um, it, it just wasn't, it didn't make sense, keep that money, I raised money from, I met with my friends and family and families, and other supporters in the region, and, and I feel very good about that, that contribution. And Sergio's rep, uh, California is a wonderful state, we have incredible transparency laws. Um, and, and so that means, if you receive a donation of a hundred dollars or more, the, uh, the city and the name of that person is listed on your four sixty. If you receive a contribution of a thousand dollars, uh, you have twenty-four hours to report that, that's called four nine seven. Those are also listed on that file, I have listened to a couple of those types of donations, because, uh, unlike, uh, this opponent, I have received many of them, like, this is over a hundred million donations. And like I said, I'm really proud of that position, it's a point that I wrote. Um, it's not easy to, the first time I get it, nobody can do that, that's why. Uh, it's a wish you made from the video, um, and, um, it does give you that. Um, and, and I really, you know, I, I work far as to be, to be a major, to be a community, and to work with a variety of different groups. Um, there's of course the O one group, I mean, the holding group, um, but I'm really out there to, to represent the working people.
Anybody else have any other questions? Anybody online? Oh, Sammy.
Sarah, on your flyer, you talk about ensuring safe and accessible streets across our city pedestrians. Both we in the village live, as Dennis said earlier, with a rated app intersection here. Both are pedestrians and traffic. We've heard all the promises, I've lived here for over thirty years. We've heard promises from various council members, as they're going through this process, their kind of fiction, help us, wouldn't even do for the village.
Great, um, so first of all, yes, I obviously agree, this is a terrible intersection. It's difficult to navigate, traffic's backed up, it's incredibly unfriendly, it needs to change. I think we can all agree that it needs to change. I think we can all agree that it needs to change. That makes it. I think one of the great examples of having a district specific city council member means that. I will be uniquely accountable to you. Which means I won't just say, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll fix this, and then I'm gonna go home and not worry about it. Which I think is probably what we try and put the. So I'm keeping me to not be.
What would you do differently?
Right, right. I mean, your approach. Right. So I think we need a very serious traffic study that looks at specifically peak community time. Because that's when you see the biggest problem. Even and, and it's needed without other times throughout the, the cycle of time. Because you know that if you're, if you're driving out at eight thirty in the morning, it's one experience. And if you're driving out at two o'clock in the afternoon on the weekend, another experience. So we really need to invest in deep traffic survey. I, I really focus on economic development and I don't have all the answers. I kind of, I know. But I wanna really think about a survey, a statistically significant survey, which, uh, something that we have been leading for. Of the residential facilities, need a real partnership with this innovation. Uh, it's a traffic study, a statistically significant survey to really look at. How people are using and what are their concerns around getting in and out. And then should really come up with a couple of different solutions and then school them. Because I know there's not gonna be just one obvious solution. If there were, we would've done that. But we really need to explore a couple of different options and then really base this, how we can visualize those options. So people on the road can really think through what could just look like that. Um, I think rendering is really helpful. It's also why, when you look at the proposal for the Hilldale, you know, hey, I have that here. Um, and so I, I want to see rendering score in different facets which we hear. Um, I'd also like to get the gas station owner and the, and the loan involved in that process too. Because I wanna make sure that they're staying involved, um, as we explore different options. Um, I know they're also enterprise brands are hard to, so over kind of the Hilldale spot, uh, the Hilldale in spot. Um, and I need to be in there as well. So we need to engage in residence, we need to learn. The, there's, um, the movement of epic grocery stores, there's like the Aladdin and the Rivian place. Um, I, I wanna get there in for two because those are good business deals and I, I imagine that. They could be doing better business if their parking was a little bit easier and traffic was a little bit easier too. So I, I really, I wanna engage everyone and I wanna think through a couple of different solutions together. Um, because you're absolutely right, it's terrible intersection. It's awful to drive in, it's confusing. It's just incredibly awful and we need to.
Sergio?
All right. So this one I'm a little proud of, you mentioned how over your thirty, thirty minutes of working here, people make, politicians make promises, right? Um, that's why I'm proud of being a, you know, not a career politician. I don't agree with politicians or planning or anything like that. I'm physically a senator, um, you know, I support the private sector, local government, federal government, all that stuff. So I'm not a career politician. And the reason why I say that's important is we can do action now, right? We can do a traffic study, which I don't think anyone knows, they can do the tubes on the ground with a black line and they chain that thing to the light bulb and all that stuff. That takes money, right? Yeah, I'm sure you have. And like, everyone's like, you want to bump you here, right? Um, and that takes forever. We can do action now, right? As a developer. If we don't do action right now, there needs to be a building remedy, which is gonna come out soon, um, which is gonna allow them basically force the city to come up and do this. Um, we need to use the tools we have, like, hey, developer, you need to pay to redo this intersection, make it safer. One of the around bell, I don't know. Um, or a, you know, better signal intersection with aisles, pedestrian and protected bike lanes, which moves more than just the line on the ground or something like that. Uh, we need to use our tool we have in our pockets right now to get the developer to do something right now. Nine to five years, the traffic study is over and all the city hall meeting is done. We need to, we need to take action, we need to take action right now. So that's what my plan is, is to take leverage of what we have.
Rob?
Sure. Well, you know, I, I live in Sunny Bray. I've lived in Sunny Bray never before, twenty-four years. Uh, one of the frustrations that I share with you is that, you know, we build new buildings and new developments and we don't plan ahead. In fact, a lot of times we're, we're doing this backwards, you know, to use the developments near me, which is Station Park Green and Azariah. That intersection used to have, you know, four, two, two lanes on either side along with a turnout lane. And when they built the, uh, new Station Park Green, they allowed them to come all the way up and really come way forward as far as where the property line is. So they removed all the right turn lanes. Um, and, you know, I went on my ride along a few months back with the police officer association president and, and. We were, we were, he's saying it's ludicrous. I mean, it's like, it's the traffic there is so much worse and it's so much more impacted. And I wanna make sure that when they, cause they're gonna build something where the holiday ends, you can't deny that that's going to happen. I wanna make sure that if we do, that we're planning ahead as to what both my owners are saying, you know? They need to be planning ahead and we need to make sure that the developer is being held accountable to make sure that that intersection works for the future. You know, throughput of, of the intersection. And so I think that's really where we need to put the focus, you know, and, and we can't wait. It has to be part of the deal. They don't get to build without solving the intersection problem. And, uh, I also have a lot of friends and family that live in the village, like, and, and I never know. If you're supposed to be pulling into that section or not, like, it's, it's really confusing, like, and, and you just sit there and it's like. Am I supposed to be here or not? And then, you know, people are trying to get on, onto the freeway too and they, they pull up and it's. It's very sketchy. And, uh, and, you know, I've watched kids crossing the street there, a lot of kids move to cross over the grocery stores. And it's, it's just a really, you know, it, it needs to be fixed. And the fact that it's rated that now, it, it's not, there's nothing lower than the rating it has. So, so, you know, we can't, we can't build two hundred and something units there and expect it to get any better.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody?
One more?
Yes.
Go on. This city managed to put no left turn on any water, possibly below longer in new times. Help us follow traffic on the north in, in our city. Um, so why don't we, okay, Boston City, we're gonna make the light, we've lost the city red for ten minutes or a time. And we're gonna have no left turns off by those rail, running three hundred hours. Because they're all trying to get around ninety-two, they just take traffic. The humps off, then goes left, blocks it all, and we have no fire station over there anymore.
Right.
So they gotta come from wait for it. They can't even get across, so you're gonna burn the ground. So what, what do we left turn at?
Well, that's a big, that's a big issue for us.
Part of that project is, yeah, how is, you know, police and fire are gonna get into that into our neighborhood if that's in a. Tough situation and traffic situation. Cause they wouldn't go over to the fire station because they're not attracted at all. We don't need one to have one across. But if it's impacted for five hours a day, what good is it do?
So let's, let's see. So what's your question there? What do you? So what do you want us to, we want us to?
No, 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 no.
Turn the screws on five.
No, no, no. No, no, no. Yeah, well, yeah, well, yeah. Then that's a good tool for us forever.
Right.
But, uh.
A big point which is that, you know, kids are eating the island. Um, we need to work well with all our fellow communities, which is why. I have hundreds of, uh, working with our community, that's the reality of it. Uh, what if I was to help people in town, I should have helped the city, also the city, go through the problem that's been brewing there. Um, basically the point is because there are many issues from two all around, traffic and the city line. And also the way that we develop and we develop infrastructure. We need to work with our managers, um, as well. So I should have much.
Yeah.
And I think it's, it's been forty-five, we want all that, and the.
I didn't, I didn't start it all on north.
No, it comes up by the issues that I think basically is the matter, uh, to be sure about. Because they're working in the circle back and they take it off the easy, it's stopping falling, comes in a little bit of opportunity to go around. Let's see, you have your best and it's not together.
Sergio, you, or, go ahead. All right. Um, you know, that's always a challenge, right? Uh, when other city councilors are thinking of choice and then back up. I don't think it's a good solution, you know, I and I, we're still in line, right? We can't. We should work with them. I don't think we should have any special relationships, you know, currently isn't a bad thing. Um, but we should definitely, you know, talk their, you know, talk their, so I'm sure we provide some service. That, you know, um, yeah, maybe when, you know, if they have loans, we, um, if they need to call it, but.
Yeah, like, well, it's good, but that's.
Well, I don't know if you think like that, that's not the major issue, like, well, the people that are not, that like. Yeah, but no, uh, you know, I, that's due this all the time, um, you know, the talent starts, right? Uh, if we're wanting something, it's for. Break or whatever, or even if you know normal rate, you can increase it, uh, compel them to do what, right? Uh, we have to be cooperative, right? Um, talk a little bit of the other thing. Um, but yeah, uh, that, I understand how you know, mostly you're in the back there, uh, and going to the other areas. We really need to work on that. But yeah, we definitely should be coming now and use our tools, I'm glad you said. We have lots of tools. We have, we're worth a dollar. We should do it now, not in five seconds.
Rob? Well, I, I'm sorry, I'm a little displaced, Sam. Uh, I, I myself live in San Mateo and I'm a plant manager for a printing facility in Hayward, which is across the bridge. So I am actually fortunate because my community is the word Burrisken. But I watch every day, and now that the pandemic is officially over, it's, traffic is kind of growing back. And I watch every day and, and I, I've been saying this for years. One of the biggest problems we have on the peninsula is our east to west, uh, commuter. We, we, we have no, we don't even have a bus that crosses San Mateo Bridge anymore. We used to have one before the pandemic that would connect the BART station in, in Hayward to the Caltrain station in San Mateo. We don't even have that. And so I think a big part of that is we've gotta start looking for solutions to bring back transit solutions that cross the bridge east to west. And even go as far north up as the like C S M. I have a cousin who, uh, has a brain disorder, unable to drive. We go to C S M. And in the last three months, they've reduced the, the, the Samtrans routes by like fifty percent. It's, it's horrific. And so what happens now is if he wants to go to class, he has to leave two hours to boarding to get two miles up to ninety-two. So we really have to look at that, that whole corridor, the east to west corridor and find solutions for better mass transit. And then, you know, that's the only way we're ever gonna get people out of the park.
Right, right. Good hour. That's right.
Yeah, the only way is. But I'm telling you, like, uh, the rich toll is now over seven dollars.
It's, yeah, but I mean, you have the money to pay for free bus rides, well.
For sure. Yeah.
I mean, do that, you have a parking lot there, there's a bus, you can pay the.
Right.
I mean, I can have four people in the car and go free.
Yeah, it's like. New proposals are not so new, that seem brought back around. Taking the Hayward Park train station parking lot and building more units there. What I would much rather see is a terminal and a parking lot there for people who, who, you know, use the buses, use BART and Caltrain. I think, I think that would be much better to make that into a transit hub rather than putting up two more buildings. Yeah, we need more buildings, but that's, that's not the right place. And then the other thing, sorry, a little of the pandemic is, you know, we share a fire department now with all the public cities in San Mateo, so it's consolidated fire. So we, we, we need another resource, we need to work on that, but. But we, we can't, we can't very well hold out on, on, on fire because it's one to know that's the fire.
So a lot of people don't have fire sprinklers. I mean, I did a tear out, so I do have a fire sprint person. I do have an upgraded infrastructure, but most people have it built. And, uh, so your house is gonna burn down pretty fast with fire. If the other ones overall, twenty-eight thousand. So, I mean, they're both far away. When we put all that over, we did not want to put another fire station in, we said, we're gonna make a fire sprinkler, but that was entirely, I think, some of the hardest.
I've got a couple of, as a real estate agent, I got a couple of real estate questions for the candidates and then I'll open up one more time for everyone else. Uh, my first one is about rent control. Where do, where do you all stand on rent control? Rob?
I am against rent control. Uh, I don't think that rent control has worked. I think there's a lot of studies that have proved it. Uh, my family, before my dad passed away, owned a eight unit building in San Francisco. And, uh, just after my dad passed away, uh, city San Francisco was brutal. That's when I come to rent control. Came in and told us we needed to do eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of second right fit on the building that they finished in nineteen, in nineteen thirties. And so what happens is, is that we were a small property owner, that was my, my mom and dad basically, they were retired. And there's no way to, no way to, to, uh, rate the rents significantly enough to market scale. For half the units, because the people have been there twenty years. They've been there longer than we owned the building. So I control in these types of instances, it just doesn't work. So I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that I don't believe that there are necessarily rental protections. There should always be. We need to make sure that the city holds bad landlords accountable, but I myself am not for it.
Sergio? Yeah, so that's a tough sell. Uh, rent control is a tough topic, you know, for small landlords. Maybe you might be small, I don't know, maybe you have a duplex, might not have a daily unit, you know, it's a tough sell. Um, for corporate landlords, things Station Park Green, obviously, uh, all those, right? Uh, you know, I think that should be part of negotiation, another tool that the city has, right? Um, we all, I'm sure if you do rent, you've seen the astronomical rents, right? My rent went from, you know, uh, thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars in like one month, with one month bonus. So I don't know, and unfortunately, I mean, I am fortunate enough to go to afford that, but. A lot of people who are on Facebook, comfortable, the people are, are students, um, I don't see how it's viable. Uh, the answer to do we support or drive for rental control is. It's no, but the asterisk, uh, we do need to do something to ensure tenants' rights are protected, right? Uh, landlords are going back and forth, you know, violence, and it tries to come to fight with people, or, you know, people going in. Um, you know, giving proper notice. They don't want to tell proper notice. They, uh, you know, I, I have some, whether it's with improper fees chart, kind of on move out. I don't know. So my friend actually sued him by mark in the money bag, um, and they're successful. Um, we really need to hold landlord accountable. At the end of the day, you know, they're providing the service, sure. But they need to follow the law and the tenant needs to know the law, if they're gonna follow the council. We also need to fix the court, um, well, uh, you're booking out over a year out for these, like, uh, tenant landlords or. Uh, you know, all these cases, uh, tenant landlord cases. And that also needs to fix that. That means problems with fixtures, that means problems with, um, negligence, you know, fixing up the units, all that stuff. We really need to fix the whole system, um, not until the rent control, or we have had a school, but it's.
Sarah?
So in the state of California, we have a Senate bill that has this priority of the women, uh, equal to two. That actually provides for rent stabilization across the whole of the state. And we have yet to see how that really works with holding the location. Because there have been so many emergency ordinances that prevent eviction and other changes, uh, delays or the peace of the COVID pandemic. Now that we're seeing, um, the end of that emergency preparation at the state level. I'm gonna need to start to see the implementation of this law that ties rent increases to the increase of price in that. Um, there's a few things that I would say about that. I think that number one, I'd like to see the city and the county of San Mateo to do a little bit more in terms of educating tenants and landlords about this new state law. And what, what kind of obligations they have to that. From the landlord side and the student side. If most people don't know about this law, and it's helpful to, to just be knowledgeable about this law. And there's likely some kind of plain money postcard or information that can be taken. Typically, in city of San Mateo, when you move in at the time, you'll offer a twelve month lease. And once that twelve month lease is up, you're on a month to month cycle. That's what I very limited, um, protection, but this, this law, the state law just provides some protection and I'd really like to see it in place. My guess is that that law is more than enough to protect both property owners and tenants. So I don't believe in a rent control limit based on nothing in the margin, how much you can, how much you ought to pay rent. Um, I do, I do wanna make sure that we have a strong landlord tenant relationship. I hope that all this has been given, I'm a renter, I've always had a relationship with my landlord, um, I've always been a renter. Um, and I think that's ninety, that maybe the ninety percent of landlord tenant relationships are positive relationships. People pay on time, report on every problem, the building's maintained, everything's good. It's really for only a few small, that, after, that you see if. A new tenant that's on a rent side or new, so the building is an out of, like, there. Um, the city will go in, um, and help them. That's important, uh, legislation that's, that's important. Um, but an overarching rent control, I don't, I just totally, one other thing about the topic, which is. Um, there's been, uh, a proposal to have a conventional data base. Um, and I have probably supported something like that. That's important to know. Um, because you better know where there are vacancies. You know, sometimes there are these many, they come off and people go, there must be, there's a lot of vacancies, there's a lot of cars, there's, you know, there's no vacancy. And we should have a better tool than getting based on, if there's a leak on the door or a car, uh, or a carport. Um, and we have to go out to go off of what, what's going on in the building, what's the vacancy rate. Um, mostly I'm just promising, the healthy vacancy rate is about five percent. Um, I believe that one is much lower than that in San Mateo, which means there's a lot of pressure on the market. So I'd like a little bit more information, but I think we're in a, we're in a fairly stable place and I think that those state regulations are more than enough to cover, um, a healthy landing.
Thanks, guys. Uh, one other real estate related question. Um, state bills nine and ten. I don't know if you're all aware about, basically you can. Your neighbor in your single family home neighborhood now can tear down their house and build a triflex or a quadruplex next to you, next to you. Um, so I'm just curious where you guys all stand with S B nine and, uh, S B nine and ten, what your thoughts are on that and how we can somehow. and how we could somehow, um, I know I worked hard to, to, to get my single-family home. Uh, I didn't wanna, I lived in San Francisco for six years. The reason I moved here is I wanna be able to park in my driveway and in front of my house, instead of having to double park, and lock my groceries in, and then go park my car somewhere. Uh, so I think there's a lot of issues with S B nine and ten, um, that, uh, you know, I understand there's a need for housing. I appreciate it, um, but I think there's a better way to do it, um, rather than force-feeding it to all, all of us single-family home neighborhoods, ruining the character of our neighborhoods that, uh, we've worked so hard to build and live in all these years. So I'm just curious where you guys all stand with, uh, S B nine and ten, uh, moving forward, and how you can work with that, uh, to, to, to keep, uh, to keep, uh, the integrity of our neighborhoods.
Sure. Well, I mean, they're, they're single-family neighborhoods, uh, and people have always been able to illegally make their houses into duplex. You know, in, in my neighborhood, I see it all the time. I have a neighborhood, it, it's like they have a, it's a three-bedroom house that somehow sleeps like nine people. And, and that's part of the sad thing about the housing crisis that we're in, is that, you know, these people are camping on top of each other in, in a small house. So I think, I think that we, we need to build. We, um, we have ADUs already that have been coming up. We, we have, I think, I think really the, the point is, is we gotta try to make sure that we're maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood though. So, you know, we don't want something that built, that's four stories tall, and has, you know, four units next to our single floor, you know, single unit homes. So I think that's, it's, it's just gonna have to be finding the balance. You know, it's, the state is gonna do what the state's gonna do, and we're gonna, you know, I, I hope that we can retain as much local control as possible. But again, if we don't get our housing numbers, then we lose more control. So it's, it's really trying to find that balance. But I think the biggest point is, is trying to make sure that whatever gets built, that it still fits the neighborhood, and it doesn't work the neighbor's health, and, uh, that's all I got on it.
Sergio? Yeah, that's a real tough question. Nobody wants to see a bigger house next to theirs, but at the end of the day, I think this comes down to property rights. Um, you know, we talk about reach codes, and then some people call them older reach codes, right? If I own a part of land, like, why can't I put, like, so they thought, like, some, like, on my own land, right? I'm not thought that's a good question, on my, my part, right? Um, we have a housing mandate. We have to put seventy-eight hundred units in several areas, right? That is the law. We don't. They're gonna get something called building remedy, uh, or I can call something else technically, but they're basically gonna be forced, they're gonna force the city to allow them to move units here. So I say, might as well make it easier for people in the city to add more housing. Talk about even housing as a retirement plan. If you have a two-plate, three-plate, four-plate, and you live in one, you, you have the other three, that's called, it's called house hack, because they're looking at, you know, special loans from the government, so very interesting. But, you know, it's a great way to have housing, and I think we should support it, uh, from a property rights perspective, right? All of you, you should feel, you know, you wanna add a water heater, or you wanna add a fence, or whatever, you should be able to, right? Um, I think this is, so I would support the ability to add new units, um, you know, maybe require, I don't know, some, some special thing to make your parking handle, I don't know, but we need to protect the, we need to, um, protect those livelihoods.
Sarah?
Yeah, so, I mean, state law is state law. It sort of doesn't matter what I think about it. It just, it is the law, and state law supersedes local law, just like state law supersedes state law. And, um, sorry, I didn't want to let you know, but, um, uh, look. I, I really think it's important to remember that with the implementation of these two state bills, um, you're getting unlikely to see, like, a massive single, not a single-family neighborhood. There's a few things about them. One is that you have to decide you're going to tear down a portion of your home and build a second, third, or fourth unit. Um, that takes a lot of money, a lot of planning, um, a significant permitting process, even with, uh, like, a streetlight process. You really have to want to do it, and you can't just sell your home to the developer. You need to be living up. There's some provisions around, um, tenancy that, that require a lot of, so that's one of them. The next thing is, most of what I'm hearing around the implementation of S B nine is people deciding to split their home for multi-generational housing. Um, and I think that's actually their fault. Um, we see a lot of multi-generational households coming up, uh, with maximums anyway, approximately, uh, when I was not on board, I'd see a lot of families where there's one or two people, maybe in their sixteen, seventies, and one or two people in their twenties, thirties, living the house together, um, oftentimes with a thing last day, or a combination of the thing last day. Uh, so we know that that's happening already, and oftentimes that's a feeling of loss, but. And so I'm, I'm proposing that families living together, that's right, um, and people should be able to do that. Um, it's not for when we see an impactful number of houses, it's just not. Um, we'll see, uh, you know, handful of age groups, considering, considering dwell units, brand blocks, popping up a box, um, San Mateo, we'll see, you know, a huge, uh, block splits, but it's just not gonna be when we see a impactful number of housing. The other thing I wanna say about construction right now, these are true both from the, uh, the small self-construction of, of people, you know, adding two plus, and also these larger developments, is that, you know, we all know, I think, that interest rates are going up, that is at a period time where money is very cheap, uh, that sign is functioning over, at least for right now, and we're seeing interest rates getting close to seven percent. Um, with inventory reserve on inventory and development, it's, you're returning about six percent. So if interest rates are seven, that has to really work. So we're gonna be falling down, I believe, um, and the plans constantly, as well, uh, then, so we're gonna be falling down into these large-scale developments. So it would be the job of the city council to go and plan for some of these new developments to come on board, but we're not gonna see them in the next four years. Um, and I think that's an important reminder. But, but these state laws, they, they allow these provisions, but they don't, of course, they don't, these points change, you know? You know, you're gonna go home to your home tonight, and, you know, unless you're an architect, you're probably not gonna go draw a plan. Um, and the thing is, you know, if you're happy with what your house is, that's it. And if you wanna change your house, you know, there's some, there's some new provisions that help you to, yeah, and it's sort of.
Any other questions? One in the back, and I think we'll wrap it up, unless there's any from the home, or we'll, uh, we'll wrap it up.
This is a crazy question, but, well, what do you guys think of the, the new street lights? I know they're a few years old now, and whatever, but is there anybody else in this room that realizes it's dark out there? And when they're, when they're blocking a night, it is dark. And I know it's not gonna change, all the cities up and down the peninsula out there, often save a bunch of money. But they just need to save a bunch of money. They, I don't think they look out for anything, anybody else. And, uh, probably the only people that like it are birdwatchers and stuff, but I know it's my own. But I'm just curious, you know, somewhere, somewhere, somebody higher up in the city may, may, the city.
Yeah, my question is. Sure. Uh, well, yes, and I think we all agree that the city is too dark, you know, the, the.
Yeah.
And, and, and there's.
A hundred times.
You know, I, I live on, I live on, uh, I live on Delmar Street, pretty busy part, or Terryville Street, and yet there are, if I drive home right now, like, there are parts where it's really dark. And it should not be that dark for a, for a street that has buses going down in, like, twenty-hour bit, uh, position. And so, yeah, I think, I think we need to look at our, our city street light plan. Uh, the other thing is that while they did build and change a lot of these LEDs, there's still a lot, including in my neighborhood, that are the old-school halogen lights that are not efficient, and they don't put out good light. And, and then the position and location of, of them is also bad, and when they, when they upgraded a lot of them to halogen, they didn't take the pole down, standard down the back, back, and, and primer coating, and put them back up. So we've got rusting poles, we've got, we've got hog pots of, of lights that don't match, which is really weird. But anyhow, uh, but, you know, but it's, but it's true, and it's an infrastructure thing, like, and so we should, we should, I, I wish we did more this during the pandemic when people haven't been separated from each other. We shouldn't have crew go around and take these down, refurbish them, and put them back up. I don't think we need to do that. I think we need to look at, at getting better and better maps of the lighting, and make sure that we don't have blind spots and our stuff.
Uh, this is an engineering question and a requisition question, right? When we talk about government replacing, you know, five hundred thousand, two thousand, um, light bulbs are, you know, uh, street lamps. If the government has to go out, get this, a lot of times, the people who are choosing these units never actually see this before they're on the phone, right? Um, they read the name sheet, it has something called movement that says how bright it is, right? And they just compare them, and like, oh, this box, check, 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 right? Um, I think we need to have a scripture interview of the infrastructure, right? Um, we should have to, you know, maybe have actual demo units for the city, and then help them see. Uh, I agree, I think we will all read them, but it's research about, right, South Delaware Street or Delaware Street general, it's really good at ninety, I'm just like, well, screw it, my life is screwed. Um, and it's, it's incredibly good, and I was really surprised to see that. Um, you know, as, as, uh, Rob just mentioned, there are a lot that some of you replace, and we can replace a little bit of it again. Uh, we can check the bid, pull, pull back the bid, right, make a, put out a new requisition, or, um, you know, requisition with hopefully is another thing that we should really work on, right? We paid eight hundred thousand dollars for the city senate sale app, people look at that, and that comes from someone, something I'd say is a rule. But, you know, we should really be, uh, you know, uh, a lot more careful with what we requisition, let me say. Um, but yeah, no, fully, I agree, fully, the way you did, there are actually people who are, who are advocates for, I think it's like some bird group, they think they should dimmer. Um, that's the whole thing, like, we've always seen, you really look like an area, but they're colored. Yeah, yeah, they think it should dimmer, but, um, at night, you wanna take the public safety, I, I can take it, but.
Yeah, so I, I'll, I'll, there are a couple of things about this, which, you know, again, I, um, I, I'm a little woman running in the streets, um, and, and women walk at night, uh, when it's very dark, it's, uh, pretty unhealthy and scary experience. Um, I also, I love to, to walk. Um, I've had all the walks in the downtown, uh, which are nice to have in the, in the whole of my, it's nice, funny to walk, but it's not so nice at night. And we really need to think about where we're placing our streetlights.